Twenty, this is our four thirty P M. Closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bets. I see he's on solid smart as present. Councilmember Gardner.
President.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths. And Mayor Manis.
And I'm here.
There you are. There's Russ. All right. Public comments. I believe we have one public comment.
Yes, I'm going to unmute him now. Mister Anderson, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I'm sorry. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ransome, Raj. I just wanted to take a moment of your time for item number two, threats to public services and I believe your buildings. But anyway, I wanted to mention and hopefully just urge the council to really consider anything you do in closed session that if it can be seen by the public and and I would say everything I've seen so far can be. So I would hope that urge you to please do not deliberate. Just if like any mandates that come on the city residents that impacts this whole region should really be shared with the public before any decisions are made and so debate can be had. And thank you very much. I won't bother you anymore. Goodbye.
Very much. All right. See, he's gone off of the screen at this time. Close session. Our city attorney will announce closed session.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. We have two items on today for closed session. The first one is conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Government code section five, four, nine, five, six point ninety-one. Kitty versus City of Desert Hot Springs, case number R I C. Two, zero, 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 five, oh, five. The second item for closed session is threat to public services or facilities. Government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, A. Consultation with Desert Hot Springs Police Department Chief Henson or his designated.
All right. At this time, we'll recess to closed session. All set?
Yep.
All right. Let's call the order. The city of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the city council and the city council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for June sixteenth, two thousand twenty. This is our six P M. Regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bets.
President.
Councilmember Gardner.
President.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths.
President.
And Mayor Manis.
President. Our invocation tonight will be given by World Life Church and Mrs. Shepherd is here with us tonight. It is all yours.
Very good. Let us go to God. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you on today. We thank this day. We thank you for who you are. Lord, we thank you for this council, Father God, and everyone on this panel, Lord. We ask today for your wisdom and your guidance in every area, on every agenda, on this particular panel's slate on tonight, Father. Lord, as we go forth on tonight, Father God, let your wisdom prevail. Let your guidance prevail, Father God. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We give you all the praise. We give you all the glory for everything is going to be done, Father God, decently and in order. We thank you for open hearts and minds, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Tonight, Jan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. See here. Got that. Got that. City attorneys report on closed session. That's right.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable action this evening.
Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the agenda. We'll be approving the consent calendar along with the agenda. Gerald, do you have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Is there anybody like to pull anything off the consent calendar?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to just note that any items in which I recused on the consent at the last meeting, I'll be recusing on also on the approval of the consent calendar.
And that's ditto for me also. With that, no one else is asking for any items to be pulled from the consent calendar. I see none. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move. We approve the agenda and the consent calendar.
There's a motion by Mister Gardner. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mister Griffith, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths.
Aye.
And Mayor Manis.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move on to public comments. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council not take action on or discuss matters raised during public portion, comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. The the all comments should be directed to the city council, should be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to remain professional, courteous decorum during public comments. At this time, I do have two public comments. We'll start with Brad Anderson.
Yes, hello. This is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ransome, Raj. I wanted to just take a moment of your time to talk about mosquitoes again. I know in this area, we have a lot of issues with the West Nile and the safe places, the light is taking place. And now with the, I guess rumored incidents at the vector control district. It's 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 clear that this this area of the Cattella Valley is not being serviced by the vector control, except for this week, anyway. And that's unacceptable, whatever the case might be. And even if it's a dire case, it needs to be addressed. And if outside entities need to come in and service this area, that's what we need to do. Because there's people of health and and safety at risk here. So and you do have a council member that sits as a trustee on that board. So I hope that he's able to give his comments to the board and to the city. Because this is very important. Again, thank you very again. Thank you very much. This is Brad Anderson. Thanks.
Thank you. Our second comment is Steve Stephen Blossi. Stephen, are you on the line?
Mister Mayor, so he submitted written comments in regards to the general plan. So at this time, we can just note that for the record.
Thank you very much. Do I have anybody else that would like to make comments in public comments?
Um, we have Beatrice Cordova and then Susan Miller.
Beatrice? Gerald, do you need to get direction on how to unmute?
Beatrice, if you're using your phone, you can dial star six to toggle mute and unmute.
Beatrice, can you hear us? We're having trouble hearing you. I'll come back to you in a minute. Susan Miller? Susan Miller, are you on the line? She's there, but I don't see her. She seems to be muted.
Oh, unmute.
There you go. You're on. You're unmuted. Your three minutes starts now, Susan.
Okay, I would like to for you to come back to to me. It's more about the general plan, but I didn't have a print of the the agenda in front of me. So if you wouldn't mind to just come back to me a little later, it is a question about the general plan.
All right. Beatrice, are you able to unmute?
Could you hear me?
I did, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Beatrice, you're my other public speaker at this time. Are you able to unmute?
She just sent me a message.
Do you want to? All right. Our staff is going to assist her and see if they can get her on. We'll come back to public comments. Those are the last two public comments, Gerald. All right. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. There are a few things that we'd like to go over tonight. As we do every week, I'd like to have Jeffrey report on our current financial situation. Jeffrey?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. So as of June fourteenth, the consolidated general fund has seventeen point six million dollars in revenue and twenty point three million dollars in expenditure. So actually, the city is actually has received and recorded several of larger revenues recently, such as the property taxes, sales tax, the public safety parcel tax and utility users tax. We've also actually last Thursday, we haven't recorded yet, but we've received the triple flip V L F that was positive into the city's banking account, but we have not checked on the cash receipt on it as of last week, but that's in the process. That deposit was for over one point one five four million dollars. So we also still have, they also still have several revenue or revenue resources still be to receive, such as the last quarter of the franchise fees, the two months of dispensary taxes, and then the January through June twenty twenty cultivation taxes. The property taxes came in about the same amount as what has been estimated. But we are expecting some follow up payments in June and July. The increment tax for the successor agency that that was paid last week as well. So by the end of this month, we should be, city should be receiving the residual amount in the in the in the trust for that at the end of this month, which should be around a hundred thousand dollars. Expenses are within budget authority. And so we are still looking at making sure everything's in line. With the reopening of many of the businesses, this, you know, city should see some increase in sales tax and T O T, the transient occupancy tax. However, we probably won't know how that's affected until July and August. Also, as of the same date, June fourteenth, the city consolidated general fund has over ten point five million dollars in in cash. Four point six million of that is assigned to operations. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Chief, could you give us a report on the testing facility, please?
Okay, I want to share a text from the employees at the testing facility that they shared with me this week. Says chief, the staff here have developed a relationship with Henry. They're talking about Henry Lozano, who the Lozano Center is named after. They say hello to his photo each morning. The security guard has full conversations with him. The staff even had cake and snack for his birthday, six, nine, and saying happy birthday. The site itself today, thanks to city council, pushing it out in the media, the testing facility, all one hundred and forty-four appointments today were filled. Since they opened, they've tested two thousand one hundred and eighty-one individuals. That's the fourth highest out of twelve sites. And that's all I have for the COVID testing site.
Thanks, chief. Could you also say a few words about the concern with the cities having over the fireworks currently?
Yeah, so we've seen an increase and even our staff has seen the increase in fireworks this year. Yesterday, we responded to seven calls regarding fireworks. They started at seven twenty-four with the last reported call at twenty-one seventeen. This the officers averaged, I'll go through it, nine minutes, eighteen minutes, thirteen minutes, twenty-two minutes, five minutes, thirty-four minutes, and twenty-two minutes on each call. So they've been responding and hanging out in the area to try to see if they set off any others to try to pinpoint locations. However, they were not able to yesterday. We sent out flyers today. We sent out a flyer to, they were delivered to every business to try to get people to understand the policy. We're hoping that people that go into the businesses will see that. It's also posted on the website and also Facebook. Starting tomorrow, we have code enforcement that that is also going to be helping with the enforcement action as well as officers being directed. So if we don't have calls for service, they know that they're to dedicate themselves to the fireworks. That's all I have.
Thanks, chief. Let's move along now to Nick Hacker, our public works manager. Can you give an update on Palm and some of the other projects that are going on right now?
Thank you. So the first project is the A T P cycle three phase one, which is Palm from Camino Adventura to Too Much Poms. The city is in the process of accepting and accepting the project and finalizing the project. The next section is the A T P cycle three phase two, which is Palm from Too Much to Pearson. Contractors finishing the striping and markings tonight and tomorrow. The contractors finishing the final punch list, after which the city will accept that project. S E will be sending the schedule for the light installation as soon as they purchase the lights. We'll get a couple of weeks, but that will be under them. Entryway sign, entryway sign monument, contractor ordered the new letters and the city asked for changes to bring more attention to the monument both during the day and night. And then the signals at Palm and Desert View and Pearson and Choya, the contractor is currently working on Palm and Desert View. They're doing the cages, the connections and the lines.
Thanks, Nick. I appreciate it. Dora, could you give us the weekly COVID nineteen update, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. At this point, we continue to move through accelerated stage two as far as reopening businesses are concerned. To date, the following sectors have been given clearance to open. Hair salons, barber shops, dine in restaurants and casinos. In addition to that, there's retail, in person shopping that's been allowed, gyms and fitness centers, hotels and short term rentals, campgrounds and outdoor recreation, zoos and museums, card rooms and racetracks and family entertainment centers. All of those sectors have already been given clearance to reopen and many have. At this point, the state has also given clearance for additional sectors to open. That would include nail salon and personal care facilities. However, the county of Riverside has seen an uptake in cases. So the Board of Supervisors will be discussing that tomorrow and deciding whether or not the county will in fact be allowing those sectors to reopen. So we anticipate to get more information from the Board of Supervisors tomorrow on that. As far as the city is concerned, we are working right now to get protective gear in place at our local gym that's located at the Health and Wellness Center. And we're also working on plans to reopen the aquatic center. We do not have a date quite yet on the reopening of of those facilities. But want to let the community know that we are working on that and hope to have those open by the first part of July at the latest. As I mentioned earlier, there is an uptake in cases at this point throughout the county. So do want to remind our residents that we do still have a face mask covering or face covering resolution in place. At this point, Desert Hot Springs does have one hundred and thirty-one positive cases and unfortunately, two deaths. So while we are opening the city and these sectors, we do want to make sure that we ask our community to still stay safe as they're going about their daily life. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Dora. Mister Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you very much. Our next item will be mayor and councilmember comments unless Gerald, do we have public speakers ready?
Yes, I think Roberta has Beatrice Cordova on the line.
All right. Here we go.
I am Beatrice Cordova. Has zoning been updated on the ten acres? Six, 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 oh, six, zero, 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 two. What is updating zoning now? And does that cover cannabis development?
Thank you, Beatrice, for the comment. We can't comment during public comment, but our staff's taking that question down. They'll get your phone number and we'll get you a phone call back with the answer. Susan Miller, are you now ready for your comments?
Hey, we just got back from L A. So we're just going through the agenda. It's going to take us a little while.
Okay, Susan, I I'm going to have to put you off till the end of the agenda then.
Okay.
Please be prepared in the future. All right. With that said, we'll move on to mayor and councilmember comments. We'll start. Let's see here. Who wants to start tonight? I'm just going down the thing here. Robert. Mister, I'm sorry, Count Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm kind of sure on this. No major meetings did do the COVID nineteen test last week, along with some of my fellow council members and the mayor and some city staff. Very quick, very painless. I think honestly, the most painful part of that was registering to get an appointment. The appointment itself was very quick and I got my result back. It's negative. I would urge everybody to do it. It is free. And one of the benefits of the more people testing is that it helps keep the statistics down to where we need. So just to give you an idea, I know one of the metrics is no more than eight percent positive rate. Two weeks ago, we were at seven percent. There has been an increase in cases. We're at seven point three, four percent for Riverside County. The more people that test, the better chance of keeping that low, the better chance we can continue to reopen. We are waiting for nail salons and massages. I think we all need a massage to open this weekend. But if we hit some of these numbers, I know there's been an increase in hospitalizations. We start to pass through some of these metrics, then what will happen is they will stop the progress. So I'm going to urge everybody to get out there, get a test, help keep this this positive percentage low so we can continue to open up the economy. Also did yesterday, I think, was it yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. So the Living Desert reopened yesterday and was able to attend a special elected officials ceremony. We got to have some cookies and water and then we got to walk through the new Australian Adventures exhibit. I've not been to the Living Desert in a number of years and they've really done a lot of work there. The they have brand new entrance. And now they have this Australian Adventures exhibit. And what's really, really unique about it is that you get to go inside and and they have wallabies. So I'm assuming because they don't attack, maybe, you know, kangaroos would kick you, but they're pretty docile. So you go through a door and once everyone's in, you go through a second door and then there's a sidewalk around and they've got a little grass area with trees and the wallabies just kind of hop all around you. It's it's a really, really cool thing. So if you get a chance, I would say go there, you know. I also got a private tour from them, which was really cool. We got to go behind the scenes on some stuff, got to feed a giraffe. One of the things they told us was that it costs about forty thousand dollars a day just to run that place and keep the animals fed. And they took quite a hit, just as most businesses did. The thing about that is that they can't not feed the animals. They can't not care for the animals. So if you get a chance, please go check it out. They do have the Australian exhibit, Adventures exhibit, as well as the other ones they have. And coming up right now, they're working on a black rhinoceros exhibit, which is a very endangered species. And so the more we attend, the more we contribute, the better chance of them getting that sooner and more for us to see. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Griffith. Next on my screen is councilmember Bets.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I was having some trouble with the audio earlier. Can you hear okay?
I can.
All right, good. Thanks. So, you know, as the chief pointed out, we've got some issues with fireworks and they're really, really out of control. Nobody loves fireworks more than me, but the calls that are coming in and the the comments on social media about how bad these have gotten, and this is weeks ahead of the Fourth of July. You know, five years ago, the council put a fine in place for a thousand dollars for the first offense. And I was glad to see that that was included on the flyer the city's putting out. I think we also budgeted five thousand dollars for a enforcement team to go out there. I'm hoping city staff is going to get really, really aggressive with this. It's it's gotten so bad. The it's just like a war zone. I got people up, can't even, can't, because their animals are so disturbed by it, they can't, they're not getting a full night's sleep. And you know, other cities are following suit with fines. I note that Cathedral City now has a fine up to a five thousand dollars, which is huge amount. I called them and asked them, what are they doing as far as catching people? And they said the same thing as we do and the same thing our chief enumerated is that spent a whole lot of time trying to pinpoint the location. So the extent that, you know, residents, when you're calling in, if you can get us an exact address, that helps a lot or as close as you can get us, it really helps. And like I said, I really love the fireworks, but it's just so out of hand. So I'm I'm asking staff to please make a really, really big push this year to put a lid on this. I'm wondering if it's time now to start meeting in council chambers again. I note that I attended the Airport Land Use Commission and that is in chambers. Same thing with Riverside County Supervisors. I see La Quinta is getting ready to go back to meeting in person rather than this Zoom meeting. And I know one director at Mission Springs Water District put out the same call to get back into chambers. And I think with things opening up, it's probably time for us to do that. So I'd like to see us get moving in that direction as soon as we can. Of course, there's good parts of this Zoom meeting. There's people who can't make it down to a council meeting, but can participate this way. And so whatever parts of this that work well and with the learning process and staff's done a great job putting it together, I'd hope that we would keep what we can continuing to make sure that access from home is is increased. Mister City Manager, I keep getting a lot of questions about the parks. Are they open now?
Dora, can you respond to that, please?
The open space within the parks is open. The playground equipment itself is still closed off due to the high touch surfaces, but the the actual open space within the park is open at this point.
Okay. Do we have any indication when that's going to change?
I don't. I can put in a call, though, to see if I can get some indication and then report back to everybody.
Okay. A lot of people are wanting to use the parks, but to answer those questions for those listening and have asked, the parks are open, correct?
Correct. And we will be sure to post something on social media as soon as we get clearance that the playground equipment can be opened as well.
Great. You know, and a lot, a lot of kids wanted to do the graduation and the high school did something and we went through that with a school promotion for an eighth grader here in our house. And I just want to thank those who stood out in that heat all that time. I think it was a multi hour time when they're sitting there watching cars come up handing people their certificates and a little bag of prizes or whatever it was, you know, they had a little goodie bag. And, you know, everybody, every went through, we went through, maybe it was two, three hours after they'd already started the thing and everybody had a smile on their face like they're really enjoying it and doing their best to make it a good time. So we were at Painted Hills Middle School. I'm sure it was the same at all the schools. I just want to thank the school district for the effort they put into that to at least make a special time, special for the kids. Would have been nicer to have the proper graduation, but wow, they sure did a good job to make up for that. On the testing for the COVID is Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths pointed out, it's really important. I participated in that a couple of months ago down in Indio when they first opened up the process. I didn't see the need to go do a second test just for the sake of the numbers, but I would encourage everyone to go get the test done. In case you're wondering what the tests do, you know, they help with the true positive numbers so that we can find out what what the incidence of the infection is in the community. And the more people you test, the better handle you're going to get on that number. And of course, the lower the number, the better it is for everybody to, as far as keeping everything opened up. Nobody wants to start closing up their businesses again. And I guess if you get tested positive on that side, you'll know sooner to go get isolated. So rather than getting a bunch of people infected. The meetings I attended, I attended the Airport Land Use Commission. I attended a city cannabis tax study meeting with the consultants, looking at the cannabis taxes. I have a question for the city manager. I understand we're having a meeting June thirtieth on that subject.
That's correct.
And when will the, I imagine there's going to be some support materials provided. When will those support materials be finalized and out to the council and the public?
The material is being completed now and it'll be ready probably next week.
Okay, it's going to be more than just the three days ahead of the scheduled meeting. We're going to get those out sooner than that.
As soon as it's completed, we'll get it up to the council.
Okay, I'd encourage us to get that out in sufficient time to make sure everybody has a good look at it. I note the public comments coming in, another agenda item and hopeful take care of that. Attended the Southern California Association of Governments. They had an annual meeting with a hundred and ninety cities that are represented by the organization. The roll call took forty-five minutes. And we had two roll calls, so a lot of time just on roll call. They had to shorten it up. You know, the impact to the Cattella Valley is huge from that. You have a hundred and ninety cities gathering what have been the J W Marriott for the two days of the normally annual meeting. And the amount of lost revenue from that is just incredible. I hope we can get over this and get back. That's just amazing. Sebag Public Safety Committee. We had a two hour discussion focused on the recent unrest and particularly what took place on El Paso. And there's quite a lot of controversy over the over the the curfew that was imposed by the county. I think the sheriff made the case that that very much helped in the few people that showed up that had tool bags of protest. in the few people that showed up that had tool bags of protest, of destruction tools. So they had things in their backpacks that they weren't supposed to have, and the curfew helped them. And, you know, but I'm sure there was a lot of controversy over that when people thinking that it squelched, you know, the right to go and peacefully demonstrate. It's an ongoing issue. We had a resolution come up at the Sebag Public Safety Committee, and I, along with other members of that committee, decided that that wasn't something that we should entertain there, that that's one of those things that should come back to the council. It's a sensitive subject, so if there's going to be that debate, each city needs to debate that, decide what they're going to do, and then go back to Sebag to decide it. So that resolution never moved forward. Other than that, I've taken on the normal residents' concerns. I won't run down those this time. I'll just wrap it up here to say that, you know, if you have any concerns or questions, you have any, want something to know what's going on in the city, please contact me. I'm available. I very much enjoy getting the calls. I'm available anytime, seven days a week. And I'm sure that's the same for all the council members. That's what we're here to do, answer your questions and keep you informed. And I want to thank the staff for their continued communications on social media and Facebook to get the information out there. We're giving a lot of people, paying attention to that and making a big difference. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Just a couple of meetings this past two weeks. First, though, I did want to thank Bishop Keefian Shepherd for hosting that forum with our police chief, Jim Henson, and the new deputy chief, Steve Shaw, who I got a chance to meet. Quite an amazing new deputy chief. I'm looking forward to having him come before the full council for an introduction sometime soon. The forum was really well-attended. The chief deputy chief did a great job addressing all of the concerns. I look forward to some further meetings of those down the road. We do have here in the city an exceptionally available police leadership for our public. The team is very accessible, and I really appreciate how accessible they are, and they continue to be for every citizen here in the city. So thank you, chief, for that. While I was attending that community forum, I was missing, however, the mosquito vector control district board meeting. So I followed up with the general manager, asked about a couple of specific mosquito issues here in Desert Hot Springs. And while it is mosquito season, and the district has found mosquitoes with both St. Louis encephalitis and West Nile virus in the valley, they've all been down valley, down in Indio, La Quinta, areas near the Salt and Sea. We've not had any detected out here in the city in the traps that are out here. But it is that time of year for mosquitoes, and everyone should take precautions when they're out in the early morning and the late evening. Wear bug spray or long sleeves. I know it's one more thing to remember, but it's just a great way to stay safe in the early morning and late evenings when the mosquitoes are active. And always check your yard for standing water, in old tires, in old flower pots, things like that, and make sure that those are dumped out so that we don't have any mosquitoes breeding here. And finally, the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission met, and among the things we did was some more significant land purchases here in Desert Hot Springs as part of the multi-species habitat conservation plan. The two largest purchases that we made this last week are in the area bounded by Little Morongo, Pearson, Indian Canyon, and Mission Lakes, that square mile there. It's a huge square mile piece that is now virtually almost all under the ownership of CVCC and will remain as an undeveloped desert. That being said, if you're familiar with that parcel, down the road 30 years from now, after all of us are long gone, that area is going to be surrounded by homes. And it's roughly the size of New York's Central Park and will be in the middle of the city sometime in the future. And so I told CVCC that it's never too early for the commission and the city to start thinking about what that area could become in the future. Trails and nature walks, wildlife study, et cetera. It's a gem. It'll be in the middle of the city, and we'll want to make sure that it realizes its full potential as conserved land. So just some things to be thinking about down the road, both for the commission and for city residents and for city staff. And lastly, the COVID test last week was quick, painless, easy, quick swab. I still don't have my results back yet, although Councilmember Griffith does. Keep waiting for a text, but haven't seen it yet. But please, everybody, go down to the Lozano Center and get tested so that we can keep our ratio and our numbers up, and we can continue to open up the economy here. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pye?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take a little time today. People know that I've been conversing with Councilman Ruiz and also Council, I'm sorry, Supervisor Perez. And there have been several comments to us regarding defunding the police. Of those, only two was from Desert Hot Springs. So I want to tell you a story. First of all, I will not take a vote on defunding the police. When we started the police, we put together a police commission. And it was to make sure that the police did what they were supposed to do. One of the things that we discuss is there needs to be more communication. So I must say to you, for those that are protesting, what are you going to do after that? I suggest for those that are in Desert Hot Springs that you attempt to join the police commission or the planning commission. And particularly, I support you to do that because in the history of the police department, I've been the only black person on the police commission. Now, going further, we communicate with the community when it comes to policing. Now Supervisor Benoit said something to Mayor Parks at the time, and she assigned Mayor Mathis and myself to work on it. And it was a situation where we had Hispanics being harassed for no reason. The mayor and I had meetings at then Tedesco Park, now Lozano Park. And we had several meetings during the week. We had a meeting on Saturday, and we had a Saturday afternoon and Saturday evening to make sure we got everyone. One of the things that was said to me, or said to us, was the reason why I won't report something to the police is because if my daughter gets raped, they're going to, because of my immigration status, they're going to take me away. That shocked me, and I said to that young man, we only arrest criminals. It's not about your immigration status. We had another meeting at St. Elizabeth's, and unbeknownst to me, the door cracked open and I saw Officer Pious. He was having a meeting with people who were speaking English. That church was full. We found out what the situation was, and that officer was fired. We had another situation not too long where someone did something they should not have done. That person was fired. With Mr. Floyd, he was murdered, but we don't have that in Desert Hot Springs. And I have shared with Councilman Ruiz and Supervisor Perez, I don't know how much I can help them because our police are straight. What happens in other cities does not happen here. And when you want to talk about other things that we can be doing, we are doing them. Borrego is a, it's a situation where they don't see HMOs. They will see people that they can put on a sliding scale. They can get, find resources for them to have health. So we are taking care of our citizens. Borrego also has free dentistry, or it's on a sliding scale. They have a gym that is free. It's on a sliding scale. Our swimming pool is only a dollar for people to go swimming, and it's not all of the cost. Sebag has helped us get a homeless cooling center, and they're getting ready to do that again with wraparound services. With respect to food, we have food through Food Now, Senior Center, and the Regional Access Committee. So we're doing the things we should be doing for our community. And my thing is that the death of Mr. Floyd is for peace for everyone. We have 9% black, which is 2,300. We have 56 Hispanics, 56% Hispanic, which is 14,500. So I, as a council member, needs to be paying attention to everyone. There's a person that said to me the other day, yesterday, based on the Supreme Court ruling. He said to me, I'm a person now. I don't have to go to therapy anymore. That's who I want to defend. It's all of us. So going back to defunding, I won't vote for that. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Pye? I'll try to be brief tonight. I attended the Sebag executive meeting, and we had to postpone it due to the demonstration in Palm Desert, and we postponed it until June 8th. I was able to attend via Zoom. Update on the ATP, which is Active Transportation Grant V. There are pieces of that that's being put in at Desert Hot Springs, could have a segment of the CB Link in the future. The COVID response by the county and the cities was a long discussion based on some individual opinions. But we continued down the path of unification of Coachella Valley, making sure that all cities continue to try to unify the best they can on their responses to the COVID crisis here in the valley. As spoke about the testing site in Desert Hot Springs, the last meeting that we had, an update, was a little, possibly a little grim because a lot of people weren't getting tested. It was, they were really seeing less than 50% of the actual appointments. But the council did do some work last week. Most of us went out and were tested. We did some PR. Very simple, as I spoke about in the quick video that we posted. I think it took longer for the paperwork to print than it did for me to get my COVID test. I did receive my results back in 48 hours, and I was negative. But this helps build the numbers in Desert Hot Springs again. And I'm very happy to hear about the staff really liking the location. And I'll be sharing that with Henry's mom, Donna Lozano, here soon. And I think she'll really appreciate those comments. I attended two Riverside County transportation meetings, one, the general meeting, which had a budget update for the year, not anything else pertaining to Desert Hot Springs directly. And then I attended the ad hoc, audit ad hoc committee, which I'm appointed to. And we've been affirmed to do audits for RCTC. I believe this, when they do the audits, there's something like 12 different audits they have to do in 12 different accounts, so it's a lot. Let's see, fireworks stands are coming to Desert Hot Springs. I believe you saw the flyer from the chief earlier when he was speaking about it. It starts on June 28th after noon and ends on Fourth of July at midnight, the fireworks sales. Again, these are safe and sane fireworks. Years ago, myself and another council member worked with these organizations to bring these to our community. As a community, ran out of funding to do our own fireworks show in hopes that you would be able to celebrate within your community if you chose to. Some people, anything that explodes and goes up in the air, launches off the ground, is illegal. So if you do see those fireworks, do report those. Anything that stays on the ground and is purchased at the fireworks stands are helping nonprofit organizations in our community. And some of our organizations rely on this type of funding to fill out their year's budgets. A lot of it's youth sports. So check out the different locations. If you can spend a little money each of them, I'm sure they would all appreciate it. I had a bi-weekly meeting with the food programs and the faith-based organizations here in Desert Hot Springs. Councilmember Pye joins me on that conversation. A lot of good conversation this week. We've helped link our Rotary Club with our Senior Center, our Senior Center with Food Now. These three organizations are now doing home deliveries for shut-ins. We also have the school district on the call. I don't know if you realize, but Food Now gives away approximately, or gives approximately 300 food baskets a week, anywhere between 300 and 350 during the COVID crisis. Now, they've actually jumped up and flattened out about 520 families per week. So that's quite a bit that's going on at Food Now. They have a backpack program that they worked with the school district while schools still in session before COVID, where children that were in need of food for the weekend would take home a backpack, which had enough food in it to feed them over the weekend. They're working with the school district to identify some families that still are possibly in need of this backpack program. So lots of good things going on in our community. We got an update from multiple organizations. We have two new, we have one newer organization getting ready to open at the Methodist Church, behind the Methodist Church in their community hall. And we have another gentleman that's joined our community that's feeding homeless and, I mean, seniors. And he is going to partner with one of these organizations to use their kitchens. So lots of great opportunities. If you're hungry in our community, there's no need to be. We have plenty of assistance. So please reach out to us here at the city at 760-329-6411, and our staff can direct you in the right direction. Or please email me directly, or any council members will get you the proper locations that you can receive substance from if you need it. Wanted to thank everybody again this week and just say thank you to our community for continuing to listen to the ordinances from the state government, from our county and from our city on the COVID response, or the COVID response. The biggest worry I think that anybody has is that this will come back in vengeance in this winter. And the last thing we need is to shut our city down and what a stadium. So please adhere to the face mask ordinance when you're out in public. It might seem a nuisance to you, but again, if you're out shopping less than an hour of your life for that day to be able to cover your face and hope not spread this virus any further than it already is going. Whether you believe it's spreading through the air or not, it's not a choice when it's an ordinance and/or in law or a state's having to make recommendations to have this stuff. So with that said, I appreciate everybody continuing to listen to these ordinances. Myself and the assistant city manager, the PIO for our community, will be doing an update here pretty soon. I know I haven't done one in a couple of weeks. We'll be doing one about COVID and some of the things that are going on in our community, probably by the end of this week. So we can look forward to it. We want to continue to keep the information out there. We think it's important as a council to make sure that you're updated with the proper information. With that said, that's all the comments I have tonight. I'm going to move to our next item, which is our public hearings. Our first item on public hearings is item number three, which is a resolution adopting user fee study. I did have an organization and some comments come in through our city clerk. And so what I'm making a suggestion is, after speaking with the city manager, this is not timely. We can put this off until the next meeting. We can put this off until the next meeting. I am asking the city council to table this item for three more weeks to allow some organizations to be able to study it further.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to table the item if you're ready.
I I'm gonna have hold you to that motion because it is a public hearing. I do have to open the public hearing first. No worries. So if the council is in consensus with that, I'll take some head nods. I won't go through a staff report and then I'll go directly to opening the public hearing. Would that be okay, Jennifer? Thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna move directly to the opening of public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this item? You can either hold your comments until the July seventh meeting and or make your comments now because it is a public hearing, we must allow you time to make your public comment. Gerald, can you call out the names that have registered for public comments?
Yes, and so I have Catherine Dickerson, Sarah Nayfak, Gretchen Gutierrez, Deborah McGary, Ryland Palmer.
I'll start with the first one. Ms. Dickerson, would you like to make comment now or would you like to hold your comments until the July seventh?
I'll hold my comments till the July seventh meeting.
Thank you very much. Who was the second one, Gerald?
Sarah Nayfak.
Ms. Nayfak, would you like to hold your comments or make comment now?
I'll hold my comment till the next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez, would you like to make any comments now or would you like to hold your comments?
Can you hear me? Wonderful, thank you very much. We've been having audio problems this evening. I'll hold my comments till the July seventh meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald, I have don't have the other two on my list here.
Deborah McGary.
Deborah McGary, Ms. McGary, would you like to make comments now or hold it till the seventh? We are not hearing you.
I will hold my comments until the seventh and thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's this comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Mr. Mayor. The last person I have is Ryland Palmer, but I do not see him as a participant.
Mr. Palmer, are you on anywhere? We don't see you. I assume there is a phone on there, is that not him?
No.
Okay. All right, so at this time, since public hearing will be open, we'll continue the public hearing to just to keep it open. The motion would be to continue this meeting till July seventh and to allow the public hearing to stay open. Mr. Betts?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Griffith? I have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton, uh, Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll line up number four. It's environmental findings, general plan GPA dash twenty dash one and zoning typographical error corrections. This will be Ms. Demme.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The proposed amendment to the general plan update and zoning ordinance is to correct typographical errors in order to properly reflect the minimum density for the residential high land use and the zoning and zoning designation and the mixed-use corridor land use and zoning designation. The rec- correct density for these areas is twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre. Within the general plan, there are four locations that is being updated, including the map. And within the zoning ordinance, there are two locations being proposed to be updated. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
At this time, I'm entertaining questions to the council before I open the public hearing. Does anybody want to ask questions before the public hearing's over? Yeah.
My question is on page three sixty. And you said we're only making two amendments. Why is that in there? It's on page three sixty and it's at the very top of the page. It's regarding, shoot, the recommendation from Wind Energy.
So so the resolution has the recommendation from Planning Commission. We had to include the entire recommendation. The reason that it's there is to show that the Planning Commission recommended to allow the council to make type typographical corrections or technical corrections without having to go back to the Planning Commission. So the reason, but we put the entire recommendation in the in the in this document. That's why it has the wind energy. But the important part of that is showing that that Planning Commission is allowing these minor revisions to be presented directly to council.
Okay.
Anyone else like to ask questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time and we'll take.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Language relative to the sphere of influence that came in regarding wind or renewable energy. How did that end up playing out? Did we? Did that go in as the council had indicated that we wanted it to? I know there was some question that came up on that.
That's you guys voted to incorporate that language. That language will be incorporated when the general plan document is published.
And that's comportes to the public comment that we received on that issue?
That's correct.
Okay, and then is it a typographical error that we're correcting where we're going from fifteen dwelling units per acre to twenty dwelling units per acre? On the minimum on the was it residential high and on the multi-use commercial going to from twenty dwelling units per acre to fifteen dwell- or sorry, the other way around. Was that in the first discussion?
So it was in reflected in a government code program in the housing element requiring that those designations be at twenty. However, it was a mistake by MIG, a typographical error by MIG, they had put it at fifteen.
What the what did it show in the documents that the council received the prior meeting?
It showed fifteen, that's why we're correcting it back to.
And do we have discussion on the record that indicated that it was to be twenty?
No, we did not have discussion about the that minimum density in the previous meeting. That's why we're bringing it back here for for your review for any discussion necessary to correct.
Okay, and we have the ability after voting to approve it in the previous meeting to make changes such as this?
It's a new resolution, so yes, you would have the authority to re-adopt this new resolution, making that change.
Okay, and could other changes be brought in? Like if something is zoned commercial that somebody feels should be zoned residential?
A changing in the zoning category of a property would have to go back through the process, including notification to tribes. So this is a typographical correction in the text. However, something like that would would need to be started as a new general plan amendment from the beginning, not as a technical error or technical correction coming to just the city council.
Okay, and these are all in response to comments that I've received from residents on these questions here. The other one that came in was, I know we noticed this in the paper, in the legal paper. And we noticed it on the city website. But when there's a major zone change, isn't it customary to send a letter out to the property owners that were then, say, five hundred feet? That would indicate to them, hi, there's something come along you need to pay attention to. Not everybody sits there and reads, believe it or not, not everybody sits there and reads the the legal notices in the legal section of the newspaper. I don't know anybody who actually does that every day. Where are we at on that?
So when we have an application for a targeted general plan or zone change, the requirement is to notify everyone within three hundred feet. However, the government code, when the city does a general plan update or zoning update, is not required that the city notify the property owners because everybody is part of it. However, the city did go above and beyond and did notify every single property owner in the city of Desert Hot Springs that we are doing a general plan update and zoning update. So we did do above the requirement for this, even though it was not a requirement.
And how do we do that notification?
We mailed a letter to every person that we that there was a planning commission meeting. And we told them that if they wanted to be notified of future meetings, including city council, that they could sign up on the website. So we sent up a single a single notice in the mail to all property owners that notified them of the planning commission meeting. And then, again, like I said, notified them that if they wanted additional notifications, that they could sign up on the website.
Okay, all right. And so last question is none of these changes are changing anything that the council discussed and approved at the last meeting. These are all just strictly typographical, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. I really appreciate the response on the on those questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. We have any public testimony, Gerald?
We have no one that registered, although I'm not sure if Susan Miller's comments are relative to this item.
Ms. Miller, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm a, am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, all right. Last during the last meeting, we had a conversation about a very small lot on Dillon Road, five thousand square feet. Subsequently afterwards, I started to talk with Rebecca about usages for for the commercial, hang on, don't tell me, commercial business park zoning. And as I'm going through all of the usages now, I'm looking for, you know, the the food truck and to be able to park food truck and service food trucks down on that lot. But the only thing that I could find is under food preparation catering, no onsite sales or service, which is permitted. There's very limited permits for this business park. And since the business park has yet to be built, the ancillary uses for a business park is going to be confusing. But let's just focus on the usages of all of of this business park stuff. The business park is really supposed to be ten to fifteen acres. But unfortunately, there's a lot of lots, so they're really small. Whoops, sorry, that's my eye protector. Let me see if I can get that down. Okay. Are we still connected?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So so, you know, with this this question, I went to Rebecca and I said, well, you know, I I was led to believe, or I thought to believe, that we could actually use a small little lot for food trucks. And then I heard from Rebecca that it wasn't exactly permitted, that it was you're gonna have to go in front of the council and do a a whole not CUP, but developmental possibility. But the thing is, is these small lots, you guys, there just isn't the kind of money that you can just, you know, play around twenty thousand by the time the fees are finished and all the meetings and all the drawings. And, you know, these are small little lots and they were here before the land was annexed in two thousand and ten. They should have priority if the business park is not used, that we should be able to actually use the the lots in a manner that is not really organized for ten or fifteen acres. And with this, my food truck thing, you know, there's one other possibility that the food truck might fit into, but there is no, there's vehicle charging station. But I think that's an Elon Musk charging station that, you know, the clarifications of some of these usages can be argued forever and ever. They're open-ended and they're vague. So anyway, back to this very small lot. And Michael wanted to add also as well here. We just got one computer today.
I just, I just wanted to say.
Michael, Michael Stachin for the record, please.
Oh, Michael Tennant.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that these lots existed. This lot existed before this land was incorporated into Desert Hot Springs. And to have a zoning that is designed for lots that fifteen acres or more is completely ridiculous. There's nothing you can do with this. If the city could just somehow have some sort of an ordinance allowing something reasonable to be done there, that the city would, you know, make some sort of allowance for these for this one small lot, something to be developed there and not have to go through a very expensive fees and planning and all this kind of stuff because it's just quite frankly not worth that kind of money. But they could be a nice addition in some kind of a way if something reasonable was proposed. That's all I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the business park is kind of a a thing that is perplexing to a lot of the people down on Dillon. As you know, I was involved with the Dillonites, you know, three years ago and we were just hatching the plan for the the general plan. And I I I see this all over, you know, the city, that small, non-conforming lots really need special consideration versus, you know, it's like getting the Cinderella shoe, you know, into a glass slipper. You can't really do it. And some of the criteria about how to develop too. You know, you'd have to be hiding one of these food trucks behind a tree because you can't be seen from the street, the street. Well, that's fine with fifteen acres, but it's not with, you know, one eighth of an acre. So hopefully, there can be some kind of ordinance, some kind of consideration, unless it's fitting under home occupation somewhere. I I can't find it in the usage codes. And sorry, Rebecca, I wanted to talk to you. I was out of town and I have a bit of a problem with my nose. Sorry.
Is that it, Ms. Miller?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments, Gerald? Or public testimony?
No, we do not.
All right, with that said, we will close the public testimony at this time and open up the discussion by the city council and questions to staff again. Anyone? If I don't have anybody, we have a resolution to approve the recommenda- recommendation for a resolution. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Mayor Proton Griffith, second by Councilmember Gardner. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Need to read their, Gerald?
Yes, sorry. And it's a first reading of an ordinance of the city council of City Desert Hot Springs, correcting certain typographical errors to reflect the proper density by amending number one land use table seventeen point oh eight point oh two development standards residential districts and number two land use table seventeen point fourteen point oh two development standards mixed-use districts. That ordinance will return on July seventh for a second reading and adoption. And then the other part of this motion was the resolution and that goes into effect immediately.
Move on to the administrative calendar. Item number five, we are now sitting as a successor agency. This is a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement and joint escrow instructions with Malu Guzman of Villanueva with respect to the real property located at sixty six one forty six Pearson Boulevard, Desert Hot Springs, California, APN six three nine dash two three two dash zero four zero. And this report will be given by our finance director, Jeffrey Buckheim.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. So this is the last remaining property from the former redevelopment. It's a part of our long our property management plan for selling the remaining properties of where other reform redevelopment agency. It's the last one. It's the sales price is for ninety eight hundred dollars. And we have Lynn Coker on the line for any additional questions.
Do I have any questions for staff or consultant? I see none. Do I have any public comments, Gerald?
No, we do not.
All right, entertain a motion on the recommendation.
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Pye, seconded by Councilmember Gardner. Roll call, please.
Board Member Betts?
Aye.
Board Member Gardner?
Aye.
Board Member Pye?
Aye.
Flash Chairman Griffith?
Aye.
And Chairman Mattis. Motion passes unanimously.
Right, so we revert back to being council members. Item number six is a second amendment to the service provider agreement with Mizel Center for the Senior Center Facilities, Operation Management Services and Programs at the Desert Hot Springs Senior Center. This report will be given by the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Wombs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, you have an item before you that is asking you to authorize the city manager to execute a second amendment to the service provider agreement with Mizel Center to provide facility. facility operation management services and programs at the Desert Hot Springs Senior Center in the amount of $155,291, starting July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021, with an option to extend up to two additional one-year terms thereafter at the discretion of the City Council. To provide a little background in history, on January 17th, 2017, the Desert Hot Springs City Council authorized a three-year service provider agreement with Mizel Center to provide facility management services and senior programs at the Senior Center at a cost of $125,000 per year. The service provider agreement started on March 1st, 2017, and expired on March 1st, 2020. On March 1st, 2020, the city manager authorized the first amendment to the service provider agreement to extend the terms for an additional three months so that we could align the service provider agreement with the city's fiscal year. Over the last three years, staff has periodically met, and I'd go even further to say routinely met, with staff at the Senior Center and users of the Senior Center who express full support for and confidence in the Mizel Center and staff. Additionally, seniors at the center have attended numerous city council meetings to provide indication of support for Mizel staff as well. Also, Mizel Center currently provides senior nutrition services. They also provide a variety of programs and services that address the mental, physical, social, and recreational needs of the senior community. This includes art programs, they even provide field trips to the seniors. The programs and services provided consist of social, recreational, health education and services, nutrition, exercise, and lifetime learning. Programs are tailored to the needs of the seniors, utilizing the center and/or living in the communities surrounding the center. Mizel has used their vast experience and resources to provide senior programs that improve the quality of life for our senior community. Mizel has a strong history of successfully obtaining and maintaining contracts to operate and manage senior and community centers. They currently operate the Mizel Senior Center in Palm Springs. They are a well-established nonprofit corporation that benefits from substantial collaborative relationships with a variety of different public agencies. For example, programs and agencies like the Office of Aging, Department of Adult Services, County Board of Supervisors, the list is very extensive. Staff is recommending a continuation of their services. The approval of the second amendment to the service provider agreement would increase the annual cost of Mizel Center services by $30,291. This increase is due to increased hours of service at the center, staff pay increases, and the addition of additional staff members and hours. That does conclude my staff report. I do have representatives from Mizel on hand to answer any questions. Both the Executive Director and Center Director are available.
Thank you very much for the staff report. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Wes Winter and Melanie Lyons.
Wes, Melanie, would you like to say anything?
Well, this is Wes Winter. I'm the Executive Director of Mizel. We have really enjoyed our relationship with the city of Desert Hot Springs. The Senior Center there has been a vibrant offering that has really allowed us to sort of stretch our wings and really get involved in the city of Desert Hot Springs. So we're looking forward to a continued relationship. As Doria said, that we are able to break our Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals program to Desert Hot Springs. Additionally, we've been able to coordinate with Find Food Bank and bring in a weekly farmer's market. That's on hold right now because of the whole COVID crisis, but we've begun conversations with Find about restarting that program in the near future. So, yeah, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Melanie, anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, Wes said it all. Thank you.
All right, stand by. Am I have questions for you? I'm not sure. Do we have any other public speakers?
No, we do not.
Thank you. I just first want to say I just appreciate what Mizel has done for our community. We struggled, I believe, I've been on the council since 2007, and we just seem to continue to struggle to find a provider that would really put the program around what our seniors needed in our community. And before Mr. Winters took over, Ms. Float was the director and she helped get it going. And then Melanie came in as the director of that center. And I just can't say enough by all of you, what you've done for our community. I believe the seniors in our community are uplifted. I believe they're getting the services they need and I'm really, really pleased where we're going in the future with it. So I'll be supporting this item. Any other council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to-
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, as you noted, we had some problems in the Senior Center and go back a few years and when we were looking at making this change to Mizel, a lot of us knew that would be a really good change, but I think you'll remember, we had a whole bunch of people packed into the council chamber saying, no, no, don't change, don't go with Mizel. And at that time, staff wasn't exactly wholeheartedly in favor of making a change, but it got pressed through. And I think it shows that, you know, there was something that worked out. It worked out really well. And the proof of that is, is we didn't have a whole bunch of people here saying, you know, even showing up that there's some sort of risk that Mizel wouldn't continue. They've been an excellent organization. The seniors that I've talked to that are participating down there, the ones that were complaining before are very happy now. And we couldn't have a better relationship and a better thing going for us in our Senior Center. And I want to thank Doria Wilms for her presentation, which basically, you know, laid out exactly why Mizel has been such a good partner and is so effective for our city. So Wes and the rest of the crew at the Senior Center, thank you very much for what you're doing for our seniors. It is just absolutely fabulous to have such a quiet item on this one without a whole bunch of people showing up saying no. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what you said, Mr. Mayor, and then just add that, you know, under this, everything that's been going on with the stay-at-home orders and having to close down the services at the center itself, they've still managed to really reach out to our seniors here in town and provide them with company and just touching base with them and getting the meals and all of those things that would be so easy to let slide with the COVID crisis and everything. So I will be wholeheartedly supporting this. Wes and Melanie, you guys have been fantastic. Every senior I know that goes there loves it and just wanted to say great job and look forward to a long and continued relationship with you guys.
Ms. Pye?
Just wanted to say also that the senior citizens, the Senior Center gives calls to people and they do this on a daily, a weekly basis. And it helps the seniors, especially those that are alone, to know that somebody cares about them. And with that, I'd like to recommend staff's recommendation.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second. Mr. Griffith, did you need to add anything?
I mean, I could obviously expound on everything everyone said, but I do want to give a shout out to Melanie. The interest she takes in the seniors, this is not just, we drop in and we sit there and do nothing. She always has some kind of activity or fun plan and I think she's a great asset to have and I'm happy to, that we can keep her here. So that's about it.
Exactly.
I have a motion by Councilmember Pye, seconded by Councilmember Betts. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Max?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number seven is proposed agreement for cannabis inspection and compliance services. This will be a report by our Deputy City Manager, Luke Rainey.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is an agreement to provide services that are specific to cannabis compliance. And that includes things like ongoing expenses, background checks, and other activities that are related to compliance with state and local regulations. And the reason for this is to ensure safety and accountability issues are addressed within the cannabis industry within the city of Desert Hot Springs. So as everyone knows, this is a newer industry to the city. And so over the past few years, the city has contracted with individuals who had unique skill sets. They have a public safety background in investigations of cannabis cultivation and drug manufacturing. And as demand grew, we contracted with more individuals that had those similar skill sets. And over the last four years, four to five years, it's grown into a full-time operation with four major activity areas. The first is inspections, and that includes regulatory inspections and ongoing inspections for them to operate. The second area is providing employee background checks. They work with LiveScan on every single cannabis employee within the city and they also issue them Desert Hot Springs ID cards that are, that they have to keep track of as well. The third area is video surveillance. They ensure that the video feeds are accessible from each of the cannabis industry locations and provided to our public safety. And they manage the authentication credentials and other things that go into that service. And then there are also additional activities they do. And those are around providing testimony at public hearings and working directly with staff to help us with policies and procedures. So as they built that into this cannabis compliance program, Assembly Bill 5 went into effect this year. And this require, this requires independent contractors to be classified as employees. And as I read about AB 5, it really looked like it was designed for really large companies like Uber and Lyft and Grubhub to address what they call gig workers. And so while that may have been appropriate in those industries, it really put our four cannabis compliance staff members in a different situation because they were not interested in being classified as employees. And so what they decided to do is band together and continue the cannabis compliance services through a contract service agreement, which is before you now. And so the benefits of the city continuing with cannabis compliance services is that we would, we would have the same employees, one supervisor and three officers, and we would have the same employees that formulate and develop the city's cannabis compliance program. And we could continue to utilize their combined years of experience. I think when you combine the four together, it's over 120 years of experience they have in these activities. And also now they have the organizational knowledge of the cannabis industry within the city of Desert Hot Springs. So at this time, staff is recommending that the city council authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with cannabis compliance services. And this is for an amount of $13,800 per month. And that concludes my staff report. I also have Andrew Nielsen here with me to help me answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Luke, for the report. At this time, do we have any public comments?
We did have one, which is Jocelyn Kane, but she's no longer here.
So we have no other? All right, we'll move on to council member comments or questions.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes.
So on the employee background checks, there's been some issue on that as to what the need is for that. Our requirements seem to be considerably more stringent than other cities are requiring. Do we still have that need and why?
That's a policy discussion. It doesn't really, these are the people that are doing the enforcement for us. So if you want to talk about changing the policies, then we could do that. But at this point, we're just talking about the hiring them to do our compliance.
There's still some criminal issues involved in it, Mr. Betts, that require us to do a background to assure that they have no previous arrest record or conviction record that would prohibit them to be in this business. So I think Andrew can answer a couple more questions and references as well. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The issues regarding the background checks, those are specific to the policies that the city has currently. Clearly, we were not involved or we're not involved in the initial implementation of those rules. We support them as written. You know, we, this, the compliance program that the city has developed is a pretty exhaustive one, which is of benefit, I believe, to the city. This allows the compliance unit that we run to go out there and make sure that we're administering the best system that we can for you guys. And I think part of that is the background checks and making sure that the people that are involved in the programs, that in the individual businesses are people that we would want to be doing business with.
Yeah, I'm, it's a matter of degree is the discussion on the background checks, not that we do them or don't do them. I think everybody knows we need to do them. The question is to the degree. And that's been the question from representatives in the industry, saying that some of this is way more than other jurisdictions are requiring. Have you seen that to be your experience or you don't know?
I don't have specific information that would allow me to make a determination on that.
Okay. And so are you saying that you are not going to engage in setting policy and procedure on something like this? Because I thought I understood from the staff report that that's something that you are going to take on as one of the points that were enumerated by the staff that-
I can clarify with that, that they do-
I was asking, thanks, Luke. I was asking the applicant or the-
Mr. Betts, Mr. Betts, Mr. Betts, please don't interrupt the Deputy City Manager. He's going to answer a question as he's a superior to this person.
Okay, as soon as he does, then I'll ask the person that's even working for us or an applicant of buying for a contract. And I'm just trying to-
That's fine. You can ask a question to both of them, but I'd like you to give the Deputy City Manager the opportunity to answer a question first.
Go ahead, take as much time as you like.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify about the staff report. I did talk about the cannabis compliance team working with city staff to work on policies and procedures. Of course, anything that's a policy, we, it's not decided by them. But Andrew, one thing you might be able to talk about is the different cities that have come to our program and ask us how we're doing things.
I'll allow this conversation a little bit longer, but Mr. Betts, you've taken us off the topic at this time.
I'm not off topic. We've got an applicant who's-
Mr. Betts, why are you interrupting everybody when they speak tonight? I'm just, as the Chair of the meeting, I am determining that you're taking us off topic. So I'd like to get this question answered and then you go back on topic. This is about the contract. This isn't about policy. We'll be talking about policy in three weeks. So if you'd like that added to that conversation, I'd be happy to do that for you.
I'm just sure if you go back and review the staff report, you'll see that the items that were talked about were compliance with the regulations, employee background checks, video surveillance, and policies and procedures assistance. So that's what prompted my question. I didn't just come up with it out of thin air.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I didn't say it. I didn't say it. I think the portion of the contract is, we ensure, we ask these guys to ensure that we stay current with state and federal law. And so if you're talking about them being involved in policy decisions, it's based directly on the fact that they are informing us, there's been some change in state and federal law that we have to address in our ordinances and how we handle things. So it's not a mystery. It is directly related to that and the fact that we are one of the few places, if any, Andrew, you can tell me if any, that provides a cannabis compliance team to ensure that we have not the bad actors in town, but people that are in this business legally and doing it appropriately. And that's why the cannabis compliance teams.
If I may answer that question, there is no other city or jurisdiction out there that's, that has a compliance unit such as Desert Hot Springs. It doesn't exist. As evidence of that, just trying to get certain business requirements such as insurance. They couldn't provide quotes initially for insurance for the company because there's no one out there. This is unprecedented. We have numerous cities that have contacted us, contacted the city of Desert Hot Springs, asking how the compliance is done. We've met with some of the cities here locally and as far away as Atlanta and Northern California because Desert Hot Springs is viewed as, you know, a place where this type of industry is taking hold. And part of that is having a compliance unit. To answer your question, Councilmember Betts, we are available to assist, and that is part of the contract, to assist with policy questions and policies and procedures as well as current case law updates and things of that nature.
Okay. And I want to thank you for that very quick and easy answer. I knew you could do it. I knew that you could get that answer without a whole bunch of other help from everybody else. So, okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll just leave all the rest of my questions on the table here and we'll go ahead- we'll go ahead and go to a vote, okay?
Or whatever.
Well, there's other council members that would like to speak too, so we're not going directly to a vote, and I'll chair the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Yeah, I got it, sorry.
I got it too. Thank you very much. From this one, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, thanks. I I love the idea of contracting this portion of our city services out. I think it's an exceedingly cost-effective as well as effective way of doing it. And and I'll concur with what Andrew said. From what I've done, talking with other cities here, we are viewed as a leader, and and we've been blazing this trail longer than anybody else has. And I, for one, appreciate the fact that we are so stringent that we are above reproach, and I want to continue down that path of keeping our cannabis business here above reproach. Regulations are a pain in the patootie for everybody, for every business, but this is a new business, this is a blade, this is a trail that hasn't been walked before. You're still, to this day, in conflict with lots of federal laws that cause everybody a lot of heartburn. But as long as we stay at the position that we're at, above the fray, above reproach, I'm all for that. And so I really do like this approach, both from a cost-effective standpoint and from a leadership standpoint. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Griffiths, anything?
No additional comments.
Just that I understand, the issue of AB Five, I think, has made a lot of. There's been a lot of changes that have been required in a lot of industries that at first didn't think they were going to be affected because it was just, you know, known as the Uber bill. But I think it's a really good creative solution, and I am definitely in favor of this.
Any final comments? I entertain a motion.
Move we adopt the contract as recommended.
Second.
There's a motion. Seconded by Councilmember Pye. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Item number eight is a notice and call of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. This item will be given to us by our city clerk, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So the city of Desert Hot Springs holds its elections on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November in each numbered year. So with that said, this year, the election will be on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. On the ballot will be three offices, and the first is the Office of Mayor. The Office of Mayor will be going from a two-year term to a four-year term, and that is pursuant to Measure V, which was passed by the voters in 20 November 2018. In addition, the Office of Mayor will have a term limit of two years. And then the other two offices are council member, which is currently held by incumbent Russell Betts, and then a council member, which is currently held by appointment appointed incumbent Robert Griffith. So before you this evening, our two necessary and routine resolutions is required prior to any election. So the first one is the notice and call of election, and also request consolidation with the County of Riverside and the services of the registrar of voters to conduct the election, and then provides for payment of services from the city to the county. And the second resolution before you is in regards to the optional candidate statement and the deposit amount. So should a candidate wish to include a candidate statement in the voter's pamphlet, there is a deposit in the amount of $500, which was determined by the registrar of voters, and then the resolution also describes the different regulations that are required by the Elections Code. Next is the nomination period. So with every election, there is a nomination period, which in the Elections Code is 113 days before the day of the election and ends 88 days before the day before the day of the election. So that translates to the nomination period this year being beginning July 13, 2020, and ending on August 6, 2020. In the event that an incumbent does not file nomination papers, the nomination period is extended to August 12, 2020. There is a candidate filing fee of $25, which is in the municipal code, and then the estimated cost of this election is $41,000, which has been appropriated in this year's budget. That concludes my staff report, and I'm open to any questions.
Any public comments?
No, we do not.
Do we have any council member comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the resolution.
There's a motion by Councilmember Gardner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Betts. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith.
Aye.
Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine is the amendment to the 2019 Annual Housing Element Process Progress Report. This will be given by community development director, Ms. Timmy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You previously approved the 2019 Housing Annual Housing Element Progress Report. However, we did amend Table D to incorporate the housing element programs that were adopted by the city council in 2019. There are no changes to the rest of the report, just this Table D discussing the newly adopted programs. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any public comments?
We have none.
All right, it's time we'll go to council member comments. Anyone? Intervene a motion?
Will we adopt the amendment to the housing element?
Second.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Gardner, second by Mr. Betts. Roll call.
Councilmember Betts.
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 10 is a continue for the May 19, 2020, and June 2, 2020, appointment to the Planning Commission. I've already received a report on this by Mr. Serrano. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just noted the calendar is that we have another council meeting between now and the Planning Commission. There's a lot of applicants, want to take a more careful look at it. The there were some questions I had regarding the the application process and qualifications that came up in the last meeting, just like to get a little clarification is all on eligibility with respect to application deadlines and the need for to submit new applications with each opening, or if a prior application that indicates an interest is sufficient for the purpose of the eligibility, and if so, how far back does that go? And then in the past practice has been that if there's any present serving commissioners that they could merely send an email indicating that they wanted to continue to serve, and that served as the application. So I'm just simply asking for a little clarification and also notifying the commission, and my intent to take some more time. We'll be able to decide this at the next council meeting and still be able to seat somebody, so no more business will be missed with four candidates versus five or four commissioners versus five deciding issues on the city planning commission.
Who would you like clarification from?
You could, if you want. Whoever whoever you pick is fine with me. That's all right, I'm good. Whoever whoever may, I guess, members of the subcommittee, whoever is could just clarify those questions.
Mr. Gardner, Ms. Pye, would you like to take this one?
With all due respect, I'm done. I explained it at the last meeting. It's nothing different than the other meeting or any other procedure. We did not change that procedure, and I don't know of any other way to explain it. So, Mr. Gardner, if you want to.
I don't have anything to add to that. We there is nothing explicit in the regulation right now in the procedures, and the mayor would like the subcommittee to to add a specific date requirement. We can, Councilmember Pye and I can go back and clarify that if you think it would be helpful.
Okay, so then, Mr. Mayor, what I'm going to take from that is that anybody who submits an application is qualified as an applicant, and that, as I understand, the only requirement is is whatever applications there are have to be submitted in time for the city clerk to include those in the agenda packet, so all council members can have a look three days of and and the person making the nomination indicates who their choice will be with the agenda packet posting. And and that's it, there's no other restrictions on other than, you know, they have to be a member of the.
Well, Mr. Serrano, when he puts out the notification, he puts a respond by deadline, do you not, Mr. City Clerk?
That is correct, I do.
And how do you go by that date?
Typically, I do the week that the agenda goes out, so that I have time to compile all of the applications for inclusion into the packet.
I see. So so again, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like the subcommittee to meet again and go back and provide direction to that, but right now, the the standard operating procedure is that the city clerk puts a notification to the public out with a deadline to have applications in that is in time for them to be included in the packet for review by the council and the council member making the application, correct?
Correct, and if I can add that, I also include application, previous applications received for that term.
For that term, so for a two-year term.
Yeah.
Put in an application, and you indicate that you want to be on the Public Safety Committee, and there is an applicant, there is a vacancy on the Planning Commission, you wouldn't necessarily put a plant with that person's name before the the council member, but if they indicated that it was their second choice or something to that effect, you would.
Right, in essence, so we're we're considering previous applications for that current term and then also inviting new applications.
Okay, so clarifying this a little bit, Mr. Mayor, then the deadline would be whatever the city clerk determines is time he needs for preparation of the agenda, and if he agreed, that could be, you know, right up to the point that the agenda is published or as soon as he needs to actually get the application in. And that, if I understand, Councilmember Gardner's comments, anybody in the prior term who has indicated a desire, but anybody prior to that previously, like maybe two years ago, three years ago, would not be eligible, and that we're going to purge those applications and those aren't to be considered?
Would not be eligible unless they submit a new application.
Okay, so it's only new applications submitted in time. And and does the council have any problem with opening up this process to anybody and everybody who would like to serve, whether they've submitted an application previously or not? Can we take new applications all the way up to the new deadline for the next meeting?
That is our process.
The only issue, okay, as long as it's part of the process, I mean, if you're asking to add something to that process, we need to bring that item back to be able to do, fix that. Ms. Pye, you had something to add?
I. Gerald, your procedure is correct, and it's what we've been doing for eons. That's fine. The reason why I said we needed to extend it was because you brought on another person. You brought on one person. No one else had that opportunity, and that's why I said it should be extended now.
All right, Councilmember Pye, I appreciate that. I am just looking for direction going forward, not looking to revisit the past council meeting.
No, I'm telling you what it is. I said we should extend it. The reason why I said we should have extended was because you put in one person and no one else had an operation. So the question was, is it okay to extend it? I say yes.
Okay, well, I'll disagree with your characterization of the last applicant that was put in. My understanding was they're eligible to be on the list, but that's why I'm just seeking clarification now, since we have time, to make sure we don't head into those differences of opinion going into the the future. So, okay, good, I.
Mr. Griffith?
Clear, and I will go on that basis.
Mr. Griffith?
It's I I don't look at it as bringing up the past. I think I didn't necessarily agree with opening it up to me. I mean, I understand why Councilmember Pye did that was to make it fair, because someone came in, I'm kind of strict with, we had a deadline, these are the candidates, and at the agenda on that meeting, it says the following list is inclusive of individuals who applied for this vacancy and during the commission recruitment in January 2020. So it was five months worth of applications that I was expecting someone to be chosen from, and then it got extended because we were told that you you needed more time to make a choice, and so that was the issue. Someone else came in after. I objected because it was what I after what I consider the deadline. Councilmember Pye said, then you have to open it up again.
Okay, well, they didn't come in afterwards. They they were in all the time. That was my understanding, and I understand you didn't see that process or have those conversations, me and that person, but I had had every indication from them that they had wanted to do that for years, okay? So nothing was surprised last minute. I understand you didn't know about it, but, you know, you weren't there. So, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm clear. Do you would you like me to make a motion to continue this, or do you want to, or somebody else?
No, I'd just like to make it clear, double clear, if that's a possibility. What we're asking, the current policy is in effect that you would actually, because you're going to be the first one to do this, let the city clerk know at the time before the posting of the agenda who your nominee is. That's the addition to the current current policy of the city council.
And I'm clear with that. That's the change that we put in place at the last meeting, and so I will make a motion to continue this item if that's what's needed.
To July 7?
Yes.
Is there a second? Do I have a second to continue it? I'll second that motion. Mr. Griffith, you had you had another comment?
Yeah, so I know in there was a thing to extend the deadline for more applications to July 1, and I I don't agree with that. And I, you know, I received a letter that I think is a little, it's a little upsetting, and it kind of clarifies what I was talking about the last time, which is that people don't feel they have a chance of participating when you, they think there's a deadline and you bring somebody in. And there's an applicant that did apply in that, and basically what he said was that he would probably no longer consider it because by now it seems pointless to apply for any commissions. And so I I'm not in favor of extending the deadline. I would prefer that we choose the ones that met the original one. That's just how I feel.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond, it just seems to me that if you're opening up the process to more people, that has the exact effect that Councilmember Griffith is looking to do to be more inclusive. I can't see how extending the deadline would, but right now, I guess, my understanding is I put in a motion to continue to July 1. I'm for accepting friendly amendments, and somebody else has something else they want to do. I am just going to repeat, I am seeking clarification here. What be the wish of the council on how they want to go forward with this? So and I understand that there's some disagreement on this process, so I'm just trying to find out from all of you what that what the process is.
Either way, we got to make a decision on appointing a council, a person to the Planning Commission, so we have a process currently you're asked, currently the process is going to be if we continue this to July 7, is that the period is still open till the 1st? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I made a motion, I believe you seconded it, to extend the dead to the deadline be extended to July 1, 2020, and my understanding from Councilmember Griffith is that he doesn't like that. He wants to keep the deadline at a prior deadline, and so I need to know what date that is, and then I'll work with the city clerk to find out who had their application in at that time and then go from there.
What was the prior deadline?
I have no idea.
May 12.
So anybody that hasn't put in their application ahead of May 12 would not have any chance to serve or to apply? That was what your suggestion is?
Well, what I'm saying is that the comment you made at that time was that these people were all well-qualified, and you need more time to choose from them. So I think that that's what we should do.
Well, that's what I proposed in this one, exactly. There are, that was the first words out of my mouth, I think, during this today was who's ever well-qualified. So anyhow, I I don't really want to argue the situation, I just want to know what the direction is of the council, and I will follow it. And I just, somebody let me know what it is, and I'm getting mixed signals now here, July 1 versus May 12. So the motion, Mr. Mayor, on the floor is for.
Do you want me to continue the motion, or do you want to look at the consensus of the council and revert back to the May 12 date?
I'm willing to go along with what. I'm willing to go along with whatever everybody else, I was just trying to move this agenda item along when I made it.
That's why I'm asking you, I just need a decision from you, so we can move on to a vote.
I'm, I'm willing to accept a friendly amendment from Councilmember Griffiths.
Mr. Griffiths, is that a friendly amendment?
Yes, yeah, I, I'm willing to, to continue this to the next meeting if we use the applicants that applied by May 12th.
And so that's fine with me, if that's what you want to do.
All right, I'll second that. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sorry, Councilmember Betts?
I'm gonna hold off to see how this one goes. Before I vote, I'll wait, I'm, I'm gonna hold off my vote right now.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pi?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffiths?
Aye.
Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously.
Consent calendar's been approved, but to begin the meeting, future agenda items can be talked with the city manager's office. Do we have any other public comments, Gerald?
No, we do not.
Our next meeting is scheduled for July 7th as a regular meeting. We do have a special meeting on cannabis issues in our community to just talk about our strategic planning, which will be on June 30th, correct? That is two weeks from today. And with that, after the July 7th meeting, the city council will go dark until the last meeting in August, correct? First meeting in September. First meeting in September, thank you. Any other comments from staff? All right, this meeting's adjourned.